Motion for the plan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion for the approval of the agenda. I'll make that motion. Second. In favor?
Aye.
Approval for prior minutes, meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 2nd, 2022 meeting as submitted.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Other comments on anything that isn't already on the agenda?
You should announce just for everybody here, there is a court reporter, so if you do speak, she's going to take down whatever you say, so.
Let me get started.
Okay, first item is the Joe Jazz subdivision time extension. What this requirement is fulfilling is that the regulations require that final plan be submitted within one year of the preliminary plan approval. And the applicant is asking for an extension on that one year additional six months?
Yes.
Additional six months time to submit the final plan after the preliminary plan. I don't have a problem with that.
So then I need a motion to pass out.
I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors that they grant that time extension.
I'll start with that.
Any questions? All in favor?
I do have a question, just where is this subdivision or proposed subdivision?
I'm sorry, sir. Could you just identify yourself, please?
Tim Wales, Sophia Willard.
So Tim, it's on Maiden Creek Road. If you were to leave the township building heading.
Towards on Lonnie.
Towards on Lonnie, you bear to the right.
Across from the cement. It's, if you know where the basically highway is back there.
The brush collections center?
Yeah, they're, the brush collection centers there. Any other questions?
That's Charlesville Wardies. And building these, what, some way small warehouses that basically are correct?
That's what there is. Yeah, we didn't get the land development yet.
Well, so there's only one lot currently going through with the actual layout of a land development. The other two are proposed future lots.
And they are for warehousing?
No.
No.
We don't know what those other lots are.
Now, if they do build on them, do they get any type of tax incentive or tax breaks?
There's nothing of that being proposed right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, the next item is the Joe Jazz.
Is the vote okay?
We have a vote.
We have a motion session.
Motion on the board. There's new vote. Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Thank you.
Whenever there's, they ask for, if there's any comments, if someone comments. The next item is the Joe Jazz land development plan. This is a preliminary plan, third review. There is an April 4th SDE review letter. The applicant is here, the applicant's engineer is here, and I'll let him present his plan.
Prefer that I sit or stand?
You can just go like that.
My name is Jeremy Oakley from the Crossroads Group, we're the civil engineer and land surveyor for the applicant. Mr. Stoltz was the applicant is with us tonight as well for any questions you may have. As noted, we got the, it's been about a year since we've been here. We resubmitted plans three weeks ago after obtaining our MDS permit. Mr. Bailey uses crystal balls, it would take about a year to get that, it took us about a year to get that. Once we got that, we finalized the plans, resubmitted. We did receive the review letter dated April 4th. It's a very short review letter. I can answer any questions you have about it, I'm going to hit on two or three quick topics and then any questions you have. I'm happy to answer them.
Do you want to just hit the highlights for everyone, since it's been such a long time, what this preliminary land development plan is?
Yeah, so it's located at, it's old mushroom houses, old buildings that are there currently. Our proposal is twofold, we talked about this subdivision when we got the time extension just a few minutes ago. The initial idea was do the subdivision and eventually come through this land development. The timing of those two ended up being right against each other, but the land development component is broken into two phases. First phase, the applicant does have a potential tenant, and that is this component here that's not grayed out. It consists of warehouse flex building and associated small office area to support that. It's really geared towards a construction company.
Can you speak to the approximate size of that building for the audience?
Yeah, so the stored building, so it has a 5,000 square foot maintenance building. That's this area here. 4,000 square foot storage building. Okay? And then on the, I'm sorry, a 6,000 square foot office building. They're all on one lot, this lot is almost L-shaped, okay? The other lot has a flex building, has about a 20,000 square foot flex building. Associated parking with everything, loading docks for the maintenance building, the storage building, and quite a bit of stormwater as well associated with that. Those two lots in phase one all take access from the proposed cul-de-sac. We're making use of an existing driveway that already comes up into the site, widening it to township standards, improving it to township standards. The second phase, Mr. Bailey had alluded to this a little while ago too, has two different flex buildings. Each one's 45,000 square feet, so a little over an acre. This is not intended to take the final approval when we get to that point. Right now it's conceptual, it's flex warehouse storage space. This component is the more aggressive and a lot more detailed, we actually have architecture for some of these buildings, so phase one is, this is the first one that you should likely see come through for our final stage today. We're just talking about the preliminary tool for everything here. All the permitting that we had to do really had to consider the site as a whole with DEP, with PENDOT, with everything that's going on. So we felt it was really the best path forward to consider this as one to this stage. Since we were here last, we did get our MDS permit, as I said. We do have our sanitary sewer modules, we have all of that in place. The permit that we do not yet have is a PENDOT HOP permit. They're waiting on the township to issue preliminary approval before they'll issue their HOP. So that's the one item that is lingering.
So let me jump in here, review with the board the April 4th SDE review letter. The first letter, or the first page cites all the plans that were submitted and the various reports. We went over the background, under subdivision and land development review, the plan should be signed and sealed by a professional engineer. Item two is the HOP should be noted on the plan. Item three is an item regarding the landscape area. And a partial waiver is being requested, the applicant has submitted a request to that. And that is a waiver of section 19044G, and that is partial waiver for landscaping in the parking area. You want to touch base with what you're requesting?
Yeah, so that actually was something we've discussed back in May. And the planning commission at that time, we discussed, and just to review, parking requirements over 20 spaces require an internal island for landscaping. We asked for a waiver to say, hey, we're going to do the plantings, but can we put it around the perimeter? We'd rather keep the paving, keep it continual for the parking area for maintenance. It also reduces overall pervy, so it eliminates a little length of extra carway just to put one island in. Most of these parking facilities are at 20, this is 20, 21, one is 22 or 23. So the waiver really was to get rid of the internal island, not for the landscaping component. We still intend to do that, we're just going to put it around the perimeter of the parking area. When we discussed it, we actually have a letter from the planning commission recommending approval. It was never acted on by the board because the board didn't want to see the plan until we were further along with the MDS permit. So I'm not sure, I haven't had a situation where there's a recommendation that's sat for a year and we waited for the premise to come in. I was going to ask if you could rerecommend.
Going on to the third page, stormwater management. Just identifying that the ONM man or ONM made this agreement needs to be prepared and executed. And potential escrow fund for that. And that there's going to be on the miscellaneous, so it'll have to be maintenance agreements and cross easements for the different lots accessing that driveway or that road. Because that road is to remain private.
So do you have a question for the solicitor? If there's a template for the agreements that you have, I think we started working on draft on our end.
So I have, we definitely have one for the ONM agreement, for the easement or maintenance agreement, if you need that.
That'd be good to, we're into it, we're not, we're not completed with it. We were waiting on the MDS permit to come in to make sure everything is squared up.
The one item that's not on the review letter that I wanted to bring up, it's been a little bit of a change in the last year, is that the drop off, brush drop off storage area, I think is going away now. The township is going to have a different area. So in that area now is going to, is basically a stormwater facility. But you have that designated as a separate lot. What's going to happen to that lot?
So it's our intent with, a lot of the maintenance is going to be in association for all the property owners with the subdivision. That lot to be maintained by the association. But we wanted to keep it off of, off of one of the, off of this office space as well. As opposed to an easement, we thought it was going to be separate. That was the intent of the review.
We'll have to figure out the.
Definitely a note in the plan to say it's a non-building lot or something.
He has that, I don't know how you're going to tie it up into the easement.
Maintenance, okay. Make sure we dress it in that agreement, just to further clarify what it is.
Yeah, who's going to own it?
Yeah, who's going to physically own it?
Because if that, any that owns it goes away, then there's a lot, stormwater part out there that's not being maintained.
Even the HOD is on for the agreement, there's still got to be a physical owner for that lot.
And it's a little different than a condo. If you would actually set up an association and own it here, we don't have that, unless you create that.
We're working through some different things. Where are we jumping to? I understand as the.
Well, that's already, that is. We're talking about physically, the deed for that.
That'd be.
Yeah. And that's which corner, what's up?
That's up there.
Up there.
Yeah, that's where that brush.
Where the brush storage.
I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors that they grant the waiver requested on the 19th, 2021 for section 19044G.
Second. Motion. All in.
Tim Wales again. I just have a question, is there a plan then to get another yard waste drop off site?
The township's working on that.
Okay.
I'll be back here. The township is preparing a site for that, yes.
There won't be a lapse.
You say there will be a lapse.
There won't be a lapse.
Any other questions?
Got to vote on it.
Yeah. You want to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
No?
Then I'll make a motion that we conditionally recommend approval pending then needing the outstanding criteria from the April 4th, 2022 SDE letter.
In addition to, additionally, the item raised tonight relative to the ownership and maintenance of.
Correct, as well as the ownership of a lot of them, that would be one. Four? Lot four.
Yeah, a second?
A second.
Question? Questions? Vote on it?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, sir, could you just spell your last name?
H O. H O A G L A N D. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the overlay district, C1 zoning overlay district. I did not get everything accomplished, but I wanted to get accomplished for that, to give you a complete package. I talked to the applicant, he knows that we're not discussing that tonight, and I'll have that complete package. So we don't piecemeal, like, I would be piecemeal things. I said I would get everything combined in one package with some additional information that you requested, so I'll have that for your main. The next item is the Wolfson Group Warehouse Conditional Use Application. I guess we can say is that the applicant has granted the township an extension on the date. Date for the conditional use hearing, from 60 days to 90 days. So we're going to.
The hearing been scheduled.
It's not, so that'll be on the township's agenda. We will probably schedule it, well, won't we, we'll schedule it next week for June 9th for right now. It still may not happen because the plan would be that we get our comments to the applicant. The applicant will come here and then they may want to lay it, given what those comments are. No one's reviewed it enough now, so really it's more of an announcement item for the public. That we're really not discussing it in detail tonight or at all, because you guys don't have any review letters yet. But we are accepting. Do you guys do any formal acceptance of the plans when they come in or just?
No, we're about to add.
Yeah, so, but this would be, since this is the first planning commission, since they submitted their plans, it also starts the 90-day clock for your review of the preliminary plan, so all that'll be reviewed and you'll get comments on that as well. So they are coming through us simultaneously. I can tell you, I spoke with the applicant's attorney, and their desire is to pursue the zoning relief before pushing forward the preliminary land development. The zoning relief may be the change to the plans, and then why get comments on plans or pursue that until they know how they fare in the zoning world? So they are going to pursue that first, so that's going to be the first thing that you guys will discuss in that.
Just for obviously the audience, can you explain what a conditional use is compared to a standard use?
Yep, so it's a conditional use is something in your zoning ordinance which deals with the use of the property, not so much the development of it and things like that, which the seller takes care of. But the zoning application, which is very similar to a special exception that would go in front of a zoning hearing board. The only difference between the two is that a conditional use, rather than going to the zoning hearing board, goes to the board of supervisors. So they actually hold the hearing, they act as the judges. But it's actually a permitted use so long as the applicant can prove that it satisfies the criteria set forth in the ordinance. So the ordinance will set forth, I don't know what they are, A through Z. The applicant has to prove, they can do A through Z, and if they can, then the board reviews that and will review it and see if there's other problems that those things create. And then if they can prove that, then the public has, then has the burden to prove that this development somehow violates or interferes with the health, safety, and welfare of the court, of the township and the community to try and override the applicant's satisfaction of that criteria. So it's really just kind of go to the zoning ordinance, you look at the checklist to see if they can comply with it, and that's what they have to come in and prove.
And then in addition to that, we, now that's what the supervisors in essence can apply conditions to the project as long as they are within reasonable limits and within a certain distance of the property, correct?
That, and they have to relate to the use. Obviously, yeah, you can't, I have one example where, I actually had one down in Montgomery County where the ordinance specifically said, it was lights for a high school football field. And the ordinance specifically said you're allowed to have them on seven days a week. We came in and said, look, we'll have them on six days a week, we actually went and won back. The township tried to require a condition on that, then it could only be on five days a week. And we're like, there's no evidence to say six days is worse than five, or seven or six is better than, yeah, so. We're like, look, nobody presented evidence, so that was an unreasonable one because nobody provided evidence to say why it was reasonable.
Correct.
So they have to be reasonably related to the use and somehow controlling it to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
Is that, is that conditional?
You had to do name and.
Jerry, do you have any long lead drive? Is that conditional use hearing, is that a public?
It is, so it'll be held here, it'll be, it'll be, just like a zoning hearing, we'll have to post the property, we'll advertise it in the newspaper twice for two consecutive weeks. Essentially, it's a mini court hearing where the applicant will present the case to the board of supervisors. They'll swear in witnesses, present testimony. Neighbors can enter their appearance as parties to that application, have appellate rights to appeal that decision once it comes out. They'll then have the absolute right to present their own witnesses for or against the application and for it against basically what the applicants put up as their evidence, bring in their own experts if they want to. And then the board considers all that evidence, just like a judge would, and here's the case. So it's a quasi judicial, we're not judges obviously, but we're sitting as judges, or the supervisor will be sitting as the judges in that case, taking all the testimony and then spreading it out on a piece of paper, you know, on a table and seeing if they comply with the ordinance. But yeah, you have an absolute right to ask questions and make sworn statements for or against the application.
And that use, just for clarification, is a permitted use as long as they meet the conditions. So if they meet the conditions, the board then can't be like, well, you can't have that use anyway. We decided, you know, you're not, as long as, if they, once they meet the conditions, and it's very hard in my opinion to prove the health and well, safety aspect of it, then the board is obliged to grant the conditional use. But they can apply conditions and step above.
Does PENDOT have like any input on that as well, I guess?
We will be reaching out to PENDOT and sitting down with PENDOT to discuss the potential impact.
And there's traffic study of all these parts.
That's something they do on their own, or is that the developer's traffic study they go by?
Yes.
Because that seemed way off to me. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so.
Name and address.
Steve Frederick, 200 Justice Drive Lane, and follow up on the PENDOT. Do they report to you, you report to them? Who initiates the PENDOT study, approves it? Who makes the recommendations on how much additional, or the estimates of how much additional traffic? That kind of thing, what's your relationship with PENDOT and the proposal?
What's relationship? We'll almost be working in tandem with them. It's more their jurisdiction, since it's, everything is going to be off a PENDOT road. So it's more their jurisdiction than the township's jurisdiction. But the township can have input and have discussions with PENDOT with what concerns the township may have.
I've got a follow up question. We've done a lot of work in this area relative to the previous study. So clearly you would think you would need an additional study with such a large development.
They've prepared that.
They've already prepared, they're way ahead.
Yes.
And then who approves that? Is strictly PENDOT, or does the township get an assay on that?
Both.
Both have to be in agreement.
Township, township will review it, but PENDOT will be reviewing it also.
Okay, and those meetings are here?
No, that will be held, the meeting between the township and PENDOT will probably be held in PENDOT's offices. That will not be open to the public.
Oh, okay. I mean, that's a big deal because a lot of new traffic's going to be coming through here. That simple.
And I'll tell you, they normally don't invite me. When you show up with me, they have to bring their attorney, they don't like bringing their attorney, so I usually don't invite them.
Does anyone have any estimates of the approximate additional traffic that will be in the area as a result of this proposal?
That's in their study. I'd rather not comment on it tonight, I'd rather comment on that when we present it.
Yeah, and I did look at it, it's roughly 5,000 vehicles, personal vehicles a day, roughly 180 trucks a day. Because I was just reading.
Approximately 180 trucks a day.
It's being listed in here more as a, I call them end of line facilitating facility.
Do they have a proposal to handle that extra?
Well, that's all part of the study, and then that's what PENDOT goes back into with their conversations. The township gets involved in those conversations. The plan currently connects right into the roundabout with a secondary partial access.
What number did you say?
180.
700 passengers.
1,472?
For the cars?
For the cars.
With more? Or maybe we were looking at the 2029 figure, are you looking at the 2024 or the 2029?
There's a lot of charts, yeah. That's why I was going to comment on that.
Let's not comment on it.
Yeah, there's. So in all that, they will have to present this report at the conditional use hearing. They'll have their expert testifying about it, and then you can ask these questions to their expert at that hearing.
No, I think that's one of the biggest concerns for the general public is what's going to happen. You just did a nice job of clearing up all that traffic down there, now you're going to make mess down on the other side. That doesn't make any sense.
I'm going to discuss it. Thank you, Steve.
Charlesville Wardies, 284 West Wilmington Street. I was at the last meeting about this preliminaries going on, maybe they passed a number of 1,800 traffic trailers a day. Now, my concern is, prior to this being put into place, I was told by Mr. Frank that they had approval for a supermarket and a strip mall in there. So now, since they've changed that, was there a timeframe that they were able to now change this over to a warehouse? My main concern is that.
Nothing was ever approved for that site, sir.
Well, I'm just telling you what Dave Frank said.
Those are simple proposals, but nothing was ever put on the table.
Okay, well, it was a proposal, but that's what was said. Proposal whether it went through or not, so now they're going from that to warehouse. My point still remains, now I just heard different numbers here on traffic. What I'm going to say is I would hope the planning board would get everything together. And again, as you said, you don't have all the facts. But when it's all said and done, people in this township need to know exactly how many cars, how many trucks, and so on, and the impact to the health and welfare, but also to the traffic. Because PENDOT will tell you anything. Because PENDOT doesn't live here, I live here, and I know everybody else. That's all I'm saying, I'd like to have hard facts, and I spoke to you about that too, so, thank you.
Well, one thing about the traffic, it's going to be hard for anybody to determine how many trucks are going to come there until you know what's going to be in warehouse.
Well, they mentioned the number at the last meeting, you know, so.
Well, that's just a number that somebody pulled out of their hat too, because nobody even knows what's going in the warehouse. So how do you know what's coming?
Agreed, that's what I'm saying. Hard numbers, once it gets sit down, you know, the people need to understand exactly what type of traffic we're dealing with. I mean, we just spent all this money in two years to try to alleviate this, we could be right back to square one.
Well, that's why they're hesitant to give out numbers tonight, and what was given out at the last supervisors' meeting probably wasn't, shouldn't have been given out, simply because it came off of.
I agree with you, I was there, I agree, that was a little bit of health and skeleton, correct? That's why I'm asking you guys, say, do we have discussion about facts? You know, let's get the facts, let's put it together, and then, and then people can make a rational decision.
Well, to facilitate future meetings, which are probably going to be like last meeting, where it was 100 people and everybody's out in the panting room. I made a proposal to the supervisors to hold future planning commission and supervisors' meeting down here at the White Church, at the Bible Fellowship Church, which has a large hall. They have a much, they have a far better amplification system than we have.
Yeah, just a little.
Exactly, and that way everybody can come, have a comfortable seat, and be part of the process instead of being, somebody being left out in the driveway. So that's been proposed, I'm hoping, it seems to be gaining some traction with the supervisors. I'm hoping to hear an answer on that soon.
Well, that's good, I appreciate that, that was a concern to a lot of people.
Yeah, I know, and it wasn't fair. In interest of fairness and logistics, that's the. In interest of fairness and logistics, that's the proposal I made to them, I'm hoping they're going to grasp.
Well, you made your statement, I agree with you. You know, let's get the facts on here, let's, let's get people in a comfortable environment first of all.
Yeah.
You know, standing out there, you can't hear this and, you know, I agree with you.
Hear say don't work.
No.
And just, just for your benefit too, so you know what to expect in upcoming meetings. So I would expect that if this is discussed next week at the Board of Supervisors meeting, it's, it's not going to be discussed in detail either. It would be solely for the purpose of setting a hearing for June. We may even wait till the May meeting to set that hearing to see what happens before then. That's, that's what I will suggest. So there's not going to be much talk, but the next real meeting where this is scheduled to be discussed is the May Planning Commission meeting. So, and that may get delayed as well. If, if we get a comment to the applicant, they want to, they want to have more time to respond to our comments, they may. Well, that's, that's a next question that we can count on right now that substantive discussions will happen.
Agreed.
Just so you know when to come out.
Agreed. This is a serious issue for this township right now.
Yep.
And again, I think the people in the township would love to see its transparency and love to see the facts as you have stated, so then they can make a rational decision.
Right, agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I talked to a little bit chief and he said, well, I really can't say what I need for fire protection, I don't know what's in it.
Yeah, but that's a little different. That'll be part of the children code review.
But it's the same thing, without knowing what's in it, you still can't.
Right, they, they, they set up a manual that tells you how many trucks based on square footage. It doesn't, use is a little less involved when it's a warehouse.
Since there is a strong reporting, what, do you want to clarify?
Yes, I was reviewing the information for the queuing analysis on page fourteen of the report, not the trip generations themselves, which is, which are slightly different figures. Okay.
So you said five thousand, what, what's the number for?
For the trip generation, it's fourteen hundred cars, two hundred.
Just so you hear, so it's, it's much less than, than what you said before.
For the chip generation, it's fourteen hundred car, just over fourteen hundred cars, two hundred and fourteen trucks. Queuing is a whole different kind of analysis, but it has a much higher volume associated with it because you're figuring out the queue.
And again, all these numbers will be further clarified as we move through the process.
And they are in the report. So if somebody wants to review some to the public record, they'll find the same numbers in the report.
May not understand them as well as you, punched over to see them.
Yeah. Jared, give any long live drive. Will those, that document, those books or any of these prints be available at some point for the public to, to view?
That they are.
Like, yeah, like just physically coming here and looking at them, will they be available?
You may want to call the township to make an appointment or just to make sure they're ready, but yeah, they're here now.
Okay, thank you.
And you, you can ask for copies of them, but there's a lot of stuff. So if you're costing a lot of money to get copies of them, but you can get copies of them if you want, so.
Any other questions?
Tim Wales, Sophia Bell, Boulevard. I'm a little confused. I, I thought I understood earlier that the applicant wants to pursue zoning relief prior to plan approval. And then later, it sounded like this would be a permitted use if they meet all the conditions, so I'm confused. Does any change needed or?
No, no zoning map change or, or zoning textual change is needed. So the code does not need amended. The conditional use that relieves is the zoning relief they need, which is then a conditional use is in the ordinance as a permitted use so long as they meet certain conditions, which are then identified in the zoning ordinance as well. So their, their application is to come in, present their case to the Board of Supervisors as to how they satisfy those conditions. That's the process they want to pursue first. You saw Joe Jazz come in here, that was the subdivision land development review. Essentially, they want to go through that zoning process first, come in, prove that they can get this conditional use, and then they will come in to do the preliminary and final land development plans after that.
There's, there's three types of use.
Mr. Wales, there would, there would be no, without unapproved use, there would be no land development, so.
But there's also three types of use, right? There's use by right, which is, say, a residential district, use by right is you can build a house.
You just come in for a building permit.
You just come in for a building permit, you're done. There's special exception, which is that you have to prove that, you know, with some exceptions to the standard zoning, you could put something in there. Sometimes that's like a townhouse in a residential area, a little more density. Then there's conditional use where you have to meet a pre-prescribed list of conditions to then grant that. Technically still a, an, an exception, and the conditional use are still some form of zoning relief, but they're, they're already dictated by the ordinance of what that is. There is another form of zoning relief, which is the variance process. That's true relief. There, you're saying you have something that's preventing you from doing it, that you can't, you didn't cause that, you know, maybe you bought the thing decade ago and zone changed or whatever it might be, and you need some relief.
And the, the other one, other one you could do is, is come in, like you suggested, is come in and ask for a change to the zoning ordinance. They actually change the law itself. No one's asking for that here. This is actually already in the codes to allow it.
But zoning covers much more than just the use. Zoning also covers lot area setbacks, impervious coverage, landscaping, screening, building heights, parking requirements. So all those items are also in zoning.
Order to requirements, on and on and on.
Well, there's, there's zoning requirements, and then there's subdivision and land development requirements. So there are.
That was a land development requirement, water, your water and sewer.
Correct.
Could you just say your name again, sir, for the record?
My name is Steve Frederick, from two hundred Genesis Drive, Landen. Okay, I'm from Tim Wales again. Can I get some idea of like, in terms of the conditional uses, like how many conditions are we talking and what kinds of things are they?
If you want to look at the regulations, I can tell you what, you go to section two twenty dash one eleven point B.
Of the zoning ordinance?
Of the zoning ordinance.
That is two twenty dash.
Two twenty is, two twenty is the zoning ordinance.
One eleven. One eleven point B. And that will specify, and you can see that section specifies the conditional use requirements.
Thank you.
Any other questions? It's good to get the information out, what we can give you, so that information isn't spread around, it isn't factual or, you know. So I want to make sure everybody has their chance to ask any questions that we can answer, we certainly will.
One quick question. I'm assuming that the, the zoning law doesn't have any constraint on size of warehouse. It wouldn't really matter the size of the warehouse, no matter how big. Is that a reasonable legal assumption?
Yeah.
There is a size limit?
There's, through, through, impervious, through impervious coverage, there's a limitation.
Through impervious coverage, parking requirements, height requirements, think they're, all that's in there.
Okay.
Whether, like if you need a thousand parking spaces, that shrinks the building.
I guess, so, okay, so the entire, there's a layout, overall planning.
Each zoning district has area involved regulations.
Yeah, so, but other than that, as big as you could have relative to your parking and all these planning and, okay. And this is about as big as you get, isn't it? Well, the, see, the, the reporters are putting out a number of nine hundred thousand, nine hundred and ninety thousand square feet. Is that a, in paper, is that paper accurate?
I think it was nine thirty.
Nine hundred and thirty?
Nine thirty.
Okay. Okay, so one paper was slightly off.
Nine hundred and thirty was, is what's shown on the plan right now.
Okay. They were thirty thousand square feet off, that's a lot.
Still small compared to some of those other ones.
You know, right now. Yeah, down in Texas, they're like.
Oh, yeah.
Millions and millions.
We, uh, will adjourn?
I believe it, unless there's anything else, you know?
Sorry, maybe I missed the public comment. My name's Jonathan Gruber, four twelve Acer Drive. I'm coming to you just, I was at the township meeting, asked some questions, and they kind of directed me to you guys. I'm interested in Main Creek Crossings development. I know that last meeting, a presentation was given to you to amend the forty single family homes to eighty duplexes and change it into a rental community. And I just wanted to find out, I, I understand that that plan was not, you, you guys kind of put their kibosh on that or told them to go back? Just if I could get a little bit of information on that, I'd appreciate it.
So they had presented a sketch plan to us.
They had a sketch plan.
Which literally was the original layout of the subdivision, but where every house was shown, they had split them into duplexes.
Understood.
Each one bearing its own lot, actually, not, you know, one house or two houses in essence all one lot.
Okay.
We gave them a bunch of feedback in this meeting, and they were going to go back and talk to their client, the applicant, and see if they still wanted to proceed or not. I mean, a sketch plan is in essence just an informal presentation for just feedback on what they were looking to do. And at this point, I don't think we heard anything back from them since that meeting.
They're trying to determine how many square feet they need for.
Well, there was a concern with lot size.
And that's been specified as ten thousand square foot per lot, per regular.
Okay, seem to do it moving.
The ball, the ball's in their court, how they want to proceed.
So I just need to watch them, the agenda to see when they're going to present it to you.
Which you can do too, you can look at the minutes from last month's meeting, which.
They're on the website.
They will be, we just, we just.
No, that's okay, there's draft minutes out there too.
Perfect, okay. Thank you very much.
Nevermind, you're welcome, sir.
All right. Yes, sir.
Charles O'War, he's in reference to this gentleman. If I'm reading this right, is the township saying to them and requiring them to have a minimum of ten thousand square feet per lot?
Correct. That was the recommendation that came from here.
All right, now, are they also looking to avoid the rental and go detach, to, to detach instead of single family?
We don't know. It's, it's, they're going to come back to us. We sent them back saying we, we don't want five thousand, stick with the ten thousand, redo your plan and come back.
So they got to resubmit the plan or so on.
Exactly, we haven't seen anything since then.
Okay. Now, on a question, if he moves forward, Prince get approved and so on, is there a bond that he has to issue with the township to build?
There's, there's always a bond for public improvements.
Okay. And that's usually a percentage of what, of the total amount?
It's usually a hundred fifteen percent of the cost of the improvements upfront until the improvements are built, and then he posts fifteen percent of those improvements for the next eighteen months after they're done to make sure they, so they hold up. And then it gets released and it's, and if we accept dedication, it's ours, if we don't, then it's the homeowners who have to take care of a private street.
And that includes the finishing of roadways and all that stuff like that?
Yeah, we, we don't let them get to the point that they're released from that first escrow until all that's done.
Thank you.
Last call, anything else?
Jesus, like.
Move to new adjourn. Move to new adjourn.
One second.